I'd like to convene the January 21st meeting of the Board of Supervisors. We have two closed session items. Madam Clerk?
Item one, on the closed session agenda pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9D1, Conference with Legal Counsel Regarding Existing Litigation, Calaveras Planning Coalition v. Calaveras Board of Supervisors et al., Calaveras County Superior Court Case Number
Any public comment? Any comments from the Board? Next item, please.
Item two, pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9D1, Conference with Legal Counsel Regarding Existing Litigation, Charles Cunio v. County of Calaveras, Case Number CCVC555890.
Any public comments? Seeing none? Any comments from the Board? Seeing none? We will adjourn to closed session. Board will start at nine o'clock.
Diane, it just kicked me off my...
I'd like to reconvene the Board of Supervisors. And if you can, please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. I'd like to move to announcements. Madam Clerk?
Report of today's closed sessions. Item one, pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9D1, Conference with Legal Counsel Regarding Existing Litigation, Calaveras Planning Coalition v. Calaveras Board of Supervisors et al., Calaveras County Superior Court Case Number 19CV44471. There was no reportable action taken. Item two, pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9D1, Conference with Legal Counsel Regarding Existing Litigation, Charles Cunio v. County of Calaveras, Case Number CCVC555890. There was no reportable action.
Thank you for catching that for me. We'll go to announcements.
Announcements. This is a time for Board members and county staff to provide updates of upcoming county events that may be of interest to the public.
Any Board members? Otherwise, I want to turn it over to Supervisor Gera Mendi. Supervisor Gera Mendi.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. I get to make an announcement today and welcome a very special group of people to our community. Americor, the National Civilian Community Corps is... I get that right, Terry? Are here today. And I'd like to ask Ms. Stone to come on up and introduce... If you guys could all come up, too. I want to start by thanking you for coming to Calaveras and thank you for volunteering a year of your life to serve your country and helping make our community stronger. So, welcome. Terry?
Yeah, the crew has been helping with... We're going to be working on site assessments for defensible space, fuel reduction, and erosion control. We're going to be doing fuel reduction activities in the burn scar, getting some of the logs off the ground and getting rid of them. And we're going to do some tree planting. And we're creating firewood that we give out for the firewood program that I have. So, we're splitting and cutting firewood and getting it out the door. And they've been working out at Sheep Ranch where they're staying, out at the old Catholic Worker Farm, doing work because that's been abandoned for four years. So, they're working out there, helping out there. So, that's our projects.
Thank you very much. I'd like to welcome you to District Two. I hope you all enjoy our community and we thank you for all the work that you're providing to us. And hopefully, you'll find Calaveras a great place and come back with your friends or family or even stick around long term. So, if it's all right, can they all introduce themselves and say what town they're from or where they're from?
My name is Sydney Habush. I'm the team leader for our team, Green Six. I'm from Charlotte, North Carolina.
No way! Really?
My name is Miguel. I'm a corps member and I'm from Milwaukee, Wisconsin.
Milwaukee.
Wisconsin.
I'm Michael. I'm from Kalamazoo, Michigan.
I'm Lucy. I'm from Brooklyn, New York.
My name's Vanessa. I'm from Redlands, California.
My name is Brittany. I'm from Taos, New Mexico.
My name is Aiden. I'm from Texas.
My name's Ariel. I'm from Kansas City.
Kansas City, Missouri? Kansas City.
Kansas City, Missouri. Okay.
I'm Gwene and I'm from Colorado.
My name is Eric and I'm from Elkhart City, Maryland.
My name's Gabrielle. I'm from Memphis, Tennessee.
Madam Chair, I just am thankful for giving me the opportunity to introduce these fine people. Thank you to all of them for their service to their country and our community.
How long are they here for?
One year.
It's April 10th for 12 weeks. So, we got about 12 more weeks.
You know, if you extend it to May, they could jump a frog.
Yeah, they won't let me.
They could jump across to District One. That's right next to District Two.
I think it's great that you guys are giving a year of your life to do this. So, thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Welcome.
Wait, I want to know, Texas? Where are you from in Texas?
Austin.
Austin. Oh, I love Austin. And the bats coming out from under the bridge.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair.
The first item in recognition and acknowledgements is from the Clerk of the Board to proclaim January 2020 as National Mentoring Month and January 30th, 2020, as Thank Your Mentor Day in Calaveras County.
We're going to have to go ahead and just lift it up for both of us. I'm Katherine Eustace and I'm the Director of Student Support Services at the Calaveras County Office of Education and, as many of you know, the founding director of the Calaveras Youth Mentoring Program. The program has grown significantly and I'm very happy to introduce this year our new coordinator, Kayla Gaffney, who's been with us for about four months. And she's going to read our presentation this year before the proclamation.
For all you've done for the youth mentoring and getting it started. I mean, you've put us on the back.
You hear what I'm working on now, Marita?
All right. Good morning. We are here to ask you to recognize January as National Mentoring Month in Calaveras County. National Mentoring Month is a nationwide recruiting campaign designed to connect local youth with caring adults and to recognize the mentoring relationships that form and thrive every day. My name is Kayla Gaffney and I am a Calaveras Youth Mentoring Program Coordinator. This is a best practices program that connects local youth and young adults with safe, positive mentors who offer friendship, opportunity, and support for making healthy life decisions. The mentoring program has been serving Calaveras County since 2003. It currently has 28 matches and a waiting list of about nine eager boys and girls. We fully screen, monitor, and support our volunteer mentors and mentees and provide training, field trips, and mentor council. Volunteer mentors spend a few hours every week for at least a year with their mentee having fun and building a friendship. Our evaluation data consistently shows the benefits of mentoring on a young person's life. Our mentees learn to build stronger relationships, explore new interests and hobbies, and improve their self-confidence, decision-making, and views of their future. But at its core, mentoring shows our young people that their community cares about them, sees their strengths, and wants to nurture their talents. We have some pretty amazing kids in Calaveras County, youth who face life's challenges with strength, resilience, creativity, and hope. Young people who are brave enough to invite a safe adult into their lives, who believe in them and want to invest in their greatness. This year, the mentoring program expanded to serve young adults during their transition to adulthood. Young adult mentoring supports teen and young adults at group gatherings and foster youth independent living program sessions where they connect with mentors who offer friendship, experience, and resources. The mentors provide a welcoming community to help young people develop skills for independence and greater self-awareness, enabling them to experience a smoother, more successful road to adulthood. During National Mentoring Month, we also celebrate our Friday Night Live, or FNL, mentoring program. The FNL mentoring program matches seventh and eighth grade proteges with 10th, 11th, and 12th grade mentors. Students meet after school once a week on high school campuses for structured, supervised, and very fun activities. FNL mentoring is now in its 12th year in our county, creating and supporting up to 15 matches each school year at both Calaveras High and Bret Hart High Schools. Calaveras mentoring programs receive financial and administrative support from the County Office of Education, various contracts with county agencies, and grants and individual donations solicited by the Calaveras Mentoring Foundation, whose mission is to raise awareness and funds for local youth mentoring. Your proclamation today helps us create and grow these important programs. Every youth who wants a mentor should have one, but not every youth gets one. There are currently nine boys and girls throughout Calaveras County on our waiting list, which often includes more than a dozen local students. We depend on community members to spread the word about Calaveras mentoring and help us find volunteer mentors for our eager young people. Please contact us if you know anyone who would make a great mentor for one of our amazing kids. Thank you and happy National Mentoring Month.
Thank you. I'd like to turn to the board of supervisors. Is there anything you'd like to present?
Now, therefore, be it proclaimed by the Board of Supervisors, County of Calaveras, this proclamation recognizing January 20th, 2020, as National Mentoring Month and January 30th, 2020, as Thank Your Mentor Day in Calaveras County. Whereas the future of Calaveras County rests on the hopes and dreams of its children and youth, and whereas mentors provide valuable role models for our youth, and whereas relationships with safe, positive mentors offer youth friendship, opportunity, and support of making healthy life decisions, and whereas national studies indicate youth with a mentor are less likely to skip school, less likely to start using drugs, and less likely to start drinking, and whereas the Calaveras County Office of Education administers award-winning mentoring programs that serve more than 75 students and young adults every school year, and whereas youth with mentors in the Calaveras Youth Mentoring Program have improved their self-confidence and ability to make decisions, expanded their sense of the future, and improved their attitude towards school and their teachers, and whereas there are many Calaveras youth waiting for mentors, and whereas National Mentoring Month provides an opportunity to recognize and commend the efforts of mentors and raise community awareness of the importance of mentoring.
So, take the lead, Supervisor. Is there any public comment about... Is there any public comment before we take a vote on this? Okay. Go ahead.
Well, we need to pass it first.
Madam Chair, I'll move the item.
Supervisor Mills has a motion, a second by Supervisor...
I'll second it.
Duffinelli, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Supervisors, Calaveras County, hereby declares January 2020 as National Mentoring Month and January 30th, 2020, as Thank Your Mentor Day in Calaveras County. And we do really want to thank you all. This is tremendous building block for our young children. There's ones out there that, you know, don't necessarily have the people to look up to as they're starting and you provide that service and help build our future by providing that service. Thank you.
Can we just get you guys kind of rotate over this way? More? More? There you go. And then scoot it. There you go. Better. Okay. Smile. Very nice. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. You can go. Yeah?
You can stay if you want.
Say hi to Tim. Bye.
Wait, Bob, you can't leave, Bob. You'll stay.
Okay. Madam Clerk?
Public comment. Any item of interest to the public that is within the subject matter jurisdiction of the Board and is not posted on the consent or regular agendas may be addressed during the public comment period. California law prohibits the Board from taking action on any matter which is not posted on the agenda unless it is determined to be an emergency by the Board of Supervisors. If public comment is completed before the 30-minute allotted time period, the Board may immediately move to the next order of business. If public comment is not completed during the allotted time period, it will be continued as the last item of business in order to provide an opportunity for the remainder of comments to be heard.
Are there any public comments on items not on the agenda?
Greetings, Honorable Board of Supervisors. I want to commend you on your resolution last week to join the East San Joaquin Groundwater Sustainability Plan. There are people, maybe some in this room, who say that the government can't do anything right. They're wrong. Governments can and do worthwhile things for people they represent. Managing our water resources is one of them. Thank you, Calaveras County. Someone may argue that Calaveras County becoming a member of the East Side San Joaquin Groundwater Sustainability Agency is tantamount to the county surrendering up its autonomy to big government. The San Joaquin groundwater basin is an overdraft due to overpumping by big agriculture. It's a big problem. Big government is what it needs to manage this problem. In some places, the groundwater we're pumping out is water left over from the meltdown of the Ice Age and it can't be replaced. I mean, we're pumping down this ancient water, wasting it out there in the wind and so forth, and it's an irreplaceable resource. In some places, the surface elevation of the San Joaquin Valley has sunk 40 feet due to groundwater extraction. The ancient water can't be replaced. The elevation can't be pumped back up. Running out of time. The sun shining on the Pacific Ocean raises water vapor higher than the atmosphere. Some of that water blows eastward and falls on California. Some of it falls in New York. Some of the rainwater in New York is Pacific Ocean water. There is no Atlantic water falling in California. The whole atmospheric system moves from west to east. Water is life. Our Constitution guarantees us liberty, rights to life, liberty, and happiness. That Constitution guarantees us a right to water. All the rainwater that falls in the United States belongs to the United States. The United States has legal right to that water and the power to back that up. Does it follow that all the water that falls in Colorado belongs to Colorado? Does it follow that all the water that falls on Mesa County, Colorado, belongs to Mesa County? Does it follow that all the water that falls on Tom Cruise Ranch in Mesa County belongs to Tom Cruise? That's the question. Everybody lives downstream from somebody. Do the upstream people have a right? Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments, items not on the agenda? Okay, I'll close public comments, bring it back to the Board. Oh, did you have a... Okay.
Good morning. Congratulations on your appointment to the Chair and Vice Chair. Last week, I talked about the conflict of interest that Mr. Mills appears to have with Citizens Against Commercial Regulation. There were links from your campaign website to Silent Poison, to fundraising for Calaveras Against Pot. I think it's really important that you recuse yourself from any legal issues regarding that sequel lawsuit because on your campaign site, there are... Am I boring you because you're not listening?
Please, go ahead.
Your talking points on the website are identical to those that have been in advertisements and editorials around area media. You voted to eliminate a Measure C tax that was completely non-controversial. There weren't even ballot arguments against Measure C. Everyone in the county endorsed it. After that, suddenly, code compliance wanted to do an 8.06 that reached into everybody's backyards to go after shipping containers and whatnot. None of that was on the agenda. None of that was, you know, and it went over like a lead balloon across the county. Sorry, I have asthma and I'm having a hard time breathing. Also, I've been reviewing old inside views, old public access videos. You talked early in your tenure here that you have a staff of volunteers, of four people. Your wife attended meetings that you couldn't in lieu of alternates attending meetings. I know we have nepotism laws. It's not okay for you to appoint a staff without going through, you know, human resources. It's just not okay to send Jack Cox out as a water representative for Calaveras County. He was never officially appointed as such. It's not okay to send your wife to read your emails and go to take meetings around the state as some kind of an expert on Measure C. It's not okay for your wife to have access to restricted emails. And it's not okay for you to continually misrepresent your history here in the county, taking credit for other people's work. And it's not okay for you to hire people outside of human resources. None of those people were vetted. We don't know who are on your volunteer staff and I don't know why you need a staff. This is not... You're not a member of Congress. This is a small, local government and it's important that you be able to do the job by yourself. Thank you.
Are there any other public comments? Okay, I'm going to close public comments and bring it back to the Board. Excuse me. We do not have consent agenda today. It's one of the first. I'd like to move to the regular agenda. Gary said you need time. Like to move to the regular agenda. We have... I don't know if you call it a study session, Mr. Mauer?
Yes, I'd call it a study session.
Okay. Madam Clerk?
Item four is from the Planning Department, to conduct a study session and provide direction to staff on priorities for general plan implementation.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the Board.
I'm going to just kind of go through the process a little. We're going to have a presentation from staff. I'll ask the Board if they have any questions or comments that they would like to make. I will then open it up for any public comments. If there are any questions from the public, myself or Mr. Mauer will be writing them down and it will go back to Mr. Mauer to answer any questions that might come up. And then it'll come to the Board for direction. Thank you. Please proceed.
Okay. Sorry about that. Yes, I'm Peter Mauer and the Planning Director. So, you have quite a package in front of you. I'm sorry about that. It was a rather big and complex issue. But now that the general plan has been adopted, we don't get to just put it on the shelf and move on. Now, we get to implement it. There are a lot of commitments that we made, things we said we were going to do, and it is my task to make sure that we get those things done. There are over 200 measures identified in the plan. Many are ongoing requirements, things that we consider when we review new development or we work on a capital improvement plan. But nearly half of these are sort of one-time tasks that require action by the county, adoption of an ordinance, developing a plan, instituting a new program. And the purpose of this study session is to focus on those, to review these measures, and establish the priorities. As it's probably obvious, we can't do it all at once. We're going to have to take these in, you know, small pieces. You eat an elephant one bite at a time. We just need to know where to start. So, the measures that are most important for successfully implementing this plan are what I'm trying to find out today. What is the Board's priority? What are the public's priority? How do we allocate the resources to get that done? The general plan is not just a planning document. It affects our planning department document. It affects the entire county. Many of the measures cross over department lines, public works, building, environmental management. Those are probably the key departments that are affected besides planning, but there are other ones that affect the assessor, Office of Emergency Services, the Sheriff's Department, even the library. So, I will be working with them and I have, in fact, coordinated with many of the department heads in the last several weeks, putting this package together to identify what their priorities are as well as mine. This is reflected in the discussion in the staff report where we've gone through some of the different departments and they've identified what they think they should allocate their resources. I've laid out in the staff report and the attachments all of the one-time tasks, along with recommendation of those that we believe are a good starting point. But this is your direction to me and after public input and discussion, you may find that there are other tasks that should be at the top of the list or at least within that, you know, that top tier. I'd like to note that the housing element is not included in this discussion. We've had previous meetings and we'll have more meetings on the housing element. We recently hired a housing coordinator. I'm working with her. It's a split allocation between my department and the Health and Human Services Agency. So, we're working together on implementing the housing element. We have a report due in a couple of months to demonstrate what we're doing and how we can continue to move forward. You may recall, we also had a discussion back in November or December where you authorized us to apply for some grant application to implement some of those measures. So, I'm not trying to dismiss the housing element. It is equally important. It is a part of the general plan. It is a part of the general plan, but we've had other discussions, and we'll continue to have discussions on the housing element. This is to focus on those other elements other than that. I like to think of the general plan as a business plan. You know, when you go into business, you think, okay, here's how I think my business is gonna be successful. I know that I'm gonna, you know, do X, Y and Z, and hopefully I make some money. And if I don't, then I need to adjust that plan. The general plan should not be considered a static document. We should be looking at it regularly. We should be figuring out what's working, what's not working, tweaking it if necessary. I hope we never have to go through another general plan update, not a comprehensive one. That we look at it a piece at a time, and we say, what's working, what's not? How do we fix it? And do incremental changes so that it's always up to date. We don't get in the situation where we feel, oh, the general plan is so outdated that we need to throw it out and start all over again. You know, if this county never has to go through that, then I would think that my job has been successful here. But we'll, we'll cross that bridge when we get to it. So, right now, what I'd like to do is sort of start on this process. I'm not gonna go through all of the measures. There were, what, thirty-some pages of individual members. I have them up here in case we wanna refer to a specific measure, but it's not my intent to walk through each one of those. What I would like to do is sort of go over my recommendation, and it's just that, it's a recommendation. Again, I would expect and hope that there'll be some back and forth, the discussion of why is this a priority? What do you think is priority? We might hear from the public as to what they feel are priorities. And with that, then we would begin to, to implement this plan. I do not have costs or, you know, resources allocated to these yet. That will be something that we'll be working on with the budget. I do have some money that I set aside in last year's budget to start the program. I do have some staffing resources available to begin working on it, but until I know what the priorities are, it's really hard for me to say, okay, that's gonna cost this much money, it's gonna take this much time. That will have to be worked out. So, this is really a, a big picture discussion of where are our, our priorities. As far as my recommendation to you, I think the most, I'm just sort of go through the ones that are on the list. The countywide zoning map update, I think, is an important, um, important one to do. It's, it's critical in implementing the plan. It's also very important so we don't have conflicts as time goes by, and if we don't update the map, then we have people that buy property thinking they might have land that's suitable for a certain type of development, only to find that the general plan doesn't allow it. And so, that to me is, is a key component. It's also a major implementation tool of, of plan. The second issue, and this one's probably the most complex or complicated component, that is the zoning code update. And there's really two, maybe three approaches we could take. One is a comprehensive rewrite. And the, our ordinance is a patchwork of documents that go back to the sixties that have been amended. You know, whenever we try to do an amendment, we look at other parts of the code to make sure that we don't create conflicts, but you don't catch everything. And so, we're finding there are a lot of conflicts. There are a lot of uses that are listed that just aren't a part of our economy today. There are a lot of uses that exist that aren't in the zoning code, and so it needs to be updated. The problem with that is a zoning, a comprehensive zoning ordinance update is a challenging task. It takes a long time. It's very technical in nature. We think about the amount of time that we spent on the general plan, and that is at a broad policy level. So, it's sort of easy to have some generalized language. When you get into the nitty-gritty of writing code, you have to be very careful because each word means something. And so, we will need to go over, you know, that, that task. I would recommend that we hire an outside consultant to work with the county on that, firms that have experience in writing ordinances. But that's something that we also need to have input from the public. What are the concerns that the public has about our current code? What, what's working now, what's not working? We certainly don't wanna throw out everything. And we don't wanna make such drastic changes that, you know, people that have been using their land for a certain purpose for a long time have expectations, suddenly that's no longer allowed. But it's a matter of organization and crafting it so that it, it makes sense. Because that is a long-term and complex task, there are a number of issues that we need to address immediately. And I listed some of those in the staff report, things like the conflicts between residential agricultural lands and the RR zone. We've got lighting issues and parking issues and special events and vacation rentals. So, there's some things we need to address right away. We could forego a comprehensive rewrite and just continue on with the sort of patchwork approach, and that could work. I would suggest that we do sort of a hybrid, where we start on, on a comprehensive rewrite, but at the same time, we pick up some of those key issues that really need to be addressed right away. And that those can be incorporated into our current code and then, you know, included in the comprehensive rewrite when we get to that point, you know, two or three years down the road. And it will take two or three years to get that done. I can guarantee you it's not gonna get done overnight.
You don't have to go back next week.
Uh, oh, it's, yeah, oh, it's, yeah. I have it right here in my vest pocket. Here's the code.
Peter, I thought you were working on this all this time.
We had nothing else going on. So, that's my recommendation on the zoning code. During the adoption hearings, we talked about the Valley Springs and Copperopolis community plans, also the Highway Four corridor community plans. I understood from the board that you felt that the first two, Valley Springs and Copperopolis were a high priority, get those done, and I would include that in this work program as well. As soon as those are done, then I would like to, you know, change that focus to the communities in Highway Four and work with the District Three Supervisor on, on how to, how to do that. But in the meantime, Valley Springs and Copperopolis are sort of key to, you know, concluding the work that has been going on for a long time in those communities. There were a number of implementation measures that were intended to address environmental impacts identified in the EIR and were mitigation measures. Including on those were greenhouse gas reduction plan. The first step in that would be to develop a baseline for the community. This is one thing that the Planning Commission actually established a deadline, one of the very few measures that had a date. The Commission wanted to see it done by the end of 2020, and that was included in the final adopted plan. So, this is something we do need to start right away. I think it's important. Having concrete implementation measures assist landowners and development applicants in processing, processing their applications in a timely manner. If they know what they're expected to do, whether it's biological resources, oak woodlands, traffic impacts, you know, greenhouse gas reduction requirements, they can calculate that into the cost of their development. And if it pencils out for them, good, they know how to move forward. It's the unknowns that make it very challenging for an applicant. And so, this is one that I think that we can get going on. There are a number of different entities that I know in the past at least have helped fund those kinds of studies. And so, we would be looking at outside funding for that if, if it's available. And certainly, there's a lot of different entities and agencies that, that work on that at the state level. Vacation rental ordinance. This is something that we've sort of struggled with for a number of years. It seems becoming more of an issue both from a housing element perspective as well as just land use in general. We have an ordinance in the Lake Tullock area that addresses vacation rentals there, but the rest of the county, it's a free-for-all. There are communities in my hometown of Murphy's is affected by an influx of vacation rentals where any house that goes on the market is quickly snapped up, turned into a vacation rental, and there is limited housing available for the workforce. And so, I think this is something that's important to address, as well as addressing some of the concerns that we faced with the vacation rentals, the permitting process that we already have in, in the Copperopolis, Lake Tullock area. Special events are another one of those issues that, you know, we've tried to address. There was an ordinance adopted in 2005. We are moving more and more to an economy based on tourism. We want to encourage agritourism. There was a workshop last year that was held on how to, to do agritourism in this county. Several, several-week workshop that was promoted by the Economic Development Department. And so, it's something that is, is a, a new and evolving part of our economy. And it's great that we have it, but at the same time, we have to balance the ability for someone to use their property for special events with the impact that it has on neighbors and roads and those kinds of things. So, that's another, one of those things I would recommend that we, we tackle fairly soon. Some of the things that the other departments had brought up, the RIM and benefit basin fees, those have not been updated recently. I talked to Josh in the Public Works Department, and he's ready and willing to move forward with that. That's something that's really critical to make sure that we adequately fund our road system. Farmland, farmland mapping. This would be a first step towards a larger picture of mitigation. So, we were at a disadvantage until just last spring when the Natural Resources Conservation Service, the NRCS, finally updated our soils mapping. When that was completed, the State Department of Conservation contacted me and said, now that we have the soils map, we can identify where, where are the, the important farmlands in the county. So, this, this then allows us to have a better understanding of when development is proposed on, on farmland, that, you know, what's important and what's, you know, sort of less, less desirable, less valuable farmland. So, this is something that's already underway. It's really something that the state is doing, but working, you know, we're working with us and the Ag Department to ensure that this is something that meets the county's needs as well. Let's see, traffic impact study guidelines. This gets back to the issue that I raised earlier about an applicant, you know, being able to know what's expected. And so, this is something that Josh has suggested would be an important first task to do. The, the guidelines sort of lay out what's necessary for an applicant, when, when a traffic study is necessary and what's expected to be in that traffic study. So, these, these are things that the Public Works Department has felt are, are something that's, that they could handle right away, and it would be an important tool to have in our, our toolkit. I worked with the, with Kathy Galino from the Economic Development Department and in developing some type of infill database and working on some of the incentive programs to promote infill would be something that she felt was important. A key component, a key idea behind this new general plan is we're, we want to focus development around our existing communities. We have the infrastructure available. It promotes more, uh, what's the word I'm looking for? A kind of development that enhances the community itself, rather than sort of the far-flung dispersed development that we've had as a land use pattern over the last several decades. Focusing the community, you know, development within the community allows more people to walk, to, you know, support the local businesses. So, that's sort of a, a key idea behind the whole general plan. So, coming up with incentives to allow that, identifying what lands available would be an important first step in, in promoting that, that aspect of the plan. And then the last thing on my list, and again, this is not necessarily in any order, would be to develop an oak woodland mitigation program. This is one thing that when development is busy in the county, and we've actually had a, you know, since the 2008 economic downturn, there has not been a lot of development in the county. But prior to that was one of the biggest stumbling blocks for development is how do we mitigate against oaks? You know, there's state requirements we have to meet, but it would be beneficial both for the environment as well as for the applicant to have a comprehensive program that allows someone to say, okay, this is what we need to do to mitigate these, the oak, the impacts of oak woodlands on, on properties. And so, that's something that I, I think is important for us to start working on. I am sure there are others out there that are equally important to you or equally important to members of the public. So, with that, I will turn it back to the Chair. If you have any questions of me, happy to try to answer those. Otherwise, then I think it would be appropriate to hear from the public.
Any of the board members have questions, comments, any that you would like, sorry, add to this list of high priority? Mr. Mills?
Yes, thank you. One of the things that I'm finding in my particular area is the lack of commercial and M zones. You know, it's great for us to go out and build 800 homes, but if we don't have a good plan for where to site future commercial activity along major thoroughfares, it just becomes rooftops, and that's not sustainable economically. So, I'd like to, to know where we can possibly, because we have a very limited number of M zones in this county. Placement is important because of its need to move through transportation to other centers, and so, you know, how to coordinate that. And maybe there's parts of the county that doesn't make any sense, but yet there's other areas that because of the pressure of the new home construction that's going on, we have to be thinking about where can we cite C and M zones to better utilize, be better utilized in the long term. The other thing I didn't see in this thing was resiliency centers. Where, where do we place, we know where generally they are, but how do we encourage them? How do we, how do we support them? We know that Frog Town is our major hub, but at the same time, there's many smaller hubs, and we can't just say that they're there and forget about them and, and that they're not important. It has to be part of our long-term planning that as housing growth occurs, that we are matching that with the resiliency centers that we would need to have available. Vacation rentals is not just a problem in Copperopolis, as you well know. And when we zone a piece of property for rural residential or residential, then suddenly it becomes a bed and breakfast, or it suddenly becomes a, an Airbnb, and it's, there's a constant flow of traffic through there. It's like citing a hotel right next to somebody's home, and that does impact home values and use of neighbor's property. So, I would like to see that pushed a little bit further. The other part is, is that in PF2J, it talks about groundwater recharge, and I want to assure everybody that there is no plans for groundwater recharge in Calaveras County in the next five years, but it doesn't mean that it won't happen sometime in the future. So, I think we need to think of that in the longer term of what, what groundwater recharge would be. Public access to lakes, as you know, New Maloney's, according to the Bureau of Reclamation, is an underutilized reservoir. It has never met its goals, that the federal government has set for visitor use days, and that I have an overutilized reservoir at Lake Tullock that has a significant amount of accidents and injuries as a result of its heavy use, to the point where we're putting paramedics on that lake now in the heavy periods of, of the summer. So, public access to lakes, not just New Maloney's, but other reservoirs that we have here, I think will also help to encourage our tourist population and our economy as a whole. Traffic circulation has always kind of been left in the background. We've placed subdivisions throughout this county for years without secondary exits, and then we turn around and try to figure out how to make that work. When we have large population centers that are in pockets or basins where they only have one or two exits out, that's just a recipe for disaster. We saw it at Paradise, we've seen it in other areas. But I think that that needs to be one of our priorities and starting to develop a vision for if what we've got right now isn't sufficient, where else can we go? How else can we move traffic and emergency address through areas? The bio- The biomass issue, COS 5L, is another one. It's, we have a lot of biomass in this county. Utica Water and Power did a study here about four years ago and determined that we have more than enough biomass for this area. It's just a matter of how to utilize it. Right now SPI is trucking biomass, believe it or not, to as far away as Anderson, California, and trying to make a dollar at it and they feel that they can. So why can't it be done here? What is holding us back in making utilization of that? I'm certainly glad to see the farmland mappings moving forward. That's something that we brought up during the cannabis discussion, but I think that it's vitally critical that we understand in open spaces where we have good farmland and then how do we protect it for the longer term? So the community plan, you're fully aware of where I'm at on that. That's all I have for now.
Any other supervisor?
I'm glad you brought up the oak wood mitigation measures. There's also, for some of the access issues that Supervisor Mills brought up and when it comes to fires and everything, consideration of how, what direction we want to go with open space cutting in the future and how to give direction to ordinance on what that looks like for our county as we move forward. That's environmentally sound at the same time, providing a safer environment for our residents when it comes to fire issues. That's a big one on my list. You know, working around, it's a big concern with, from a lot of my constituents and people across the county that I've talked to. It doesn't matter where you're at, you know, fire and proper preparation. I think we probably have some things being worked on from our fire departments at the same time. So, you know, as we do the general plan, I think, you know, that working with them as we proceed and, you know, just as long as we keep the Valley Springs Community Plan in front of Copperopolis, I'll be happy. Parallels fine with me, I'm just making a joke. But yeah, that's a high priority and I'm sure Supervisor Toffinelli can agree with that.
Mr. Galino.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. I look forward to the public comments as well. Peter, thank you for the presentation. You know, I agree with Supervisor Stopper really coming up with that ag mitigation plan. Oak woodlands, I know they're kind of separate, but they're also overlap each other pretty closely. So moving that along, I think as we look at these things like, and I know on each of these subjects, we're going to bring it back and we're going to have an active debate here so we don't have to get into the weeds on what that means. But certainly, we think about our economy and the changing economy, things like agritourism, as you pointed out, are really great and they do overlap again with the events policy. So we have to find a way that protects public safety, but also doesn't overly restrict people from coming up with new ideas. You know, when you look at things like events policies, and I know we'll get into this, but farm-to-fork dinners, you know, there's going to be issues that we're going to have to work out together as a board when we come up on those policies. So the things that keep moving our economy forward, give charity to business and new business is really important. So you've got a big list there, Peter. Very large list. Thank you.
Yeah, I have just a quick comment here before we go to public comment. And I'm not sure if it's something that, you brought up the traffic impact study guidelines. So we have guidelines for developers to know what's expected of them to do. Part of the quagmire in that is, that's great and I think that needs to be done, but there's several new businesses that are trying to open in my district right now that the quagmire is fire suppression. And it seems to be all over the place because one district has a fire marshal, the others don't, so we're doing it in-house here. And I think somewhere in some of these codes, we need to find that so it's very clear and possibly coming up at some time at one of our budgetarians either midterm or next year, look at helping the JPA, the fire districts, get a full-time fire marshal. So all of that goes to the fire marshal when it comes in and you bring a plan in and it goes routed, it goes to planning, wherever it needs to go, it automatically goes to fire marshal. We need to somehow take care of that because it's really hampering. We can have the greatest general plan there is, but if we have a hitch here, it needs to be dealt with, that we need to somehow incorporate that into this and make sure that we've taken care of that so it goes smoothly and right now it's not. It gets almost through the building department and the planning department and then it goes to the fire and it holds things up. So I think that's one key issue that we need to address when we bring this back and start talking about.
I'm sure, I just have one more thing. Peter, since we're setting priorities, I would encourage that whatever we bring forward, if there's, if there are implementation measures that are related, let's look at it comprehensively. So, you know, we don't have, otherwise we're going to end up with where we are now, disjointed. So, you know, we're dealing with, if we're dealing with events and it has something to do with agritourism or something, let's look at them as a group, a comprehensive strategy so we're not disjointed. That would be, as we set our priorities, that would be a request I would have.
I would agree.
I'm not clear on everything that you perceive here as short-term, long-term. Like what I'm hearing, some of these things might be easy to do. For example, Public Works might be working on something. The Planning Commission said they wanted the greenhouse gas done by baseline by the end of 2020. Is that something that's achievable and does that impact other things that we're working on?
I believe that first step of getting the baseline is achievable, yes. And that will then impact our ability to move forward on developing a greenhouse gas reduction plan as mandated by the state.
Okay, so having also a zoning map versus having all the zoning codes? What's the advantage to having the zoning map and not the zoning code update completed?
Really it's to avoid conflicts. You know, and what we would do is just look, excuse me, just look at where there, you know, with the change in land designation from the 96 general plan to the current one, there were areas that were previously identified for future single-family residential that are now working lands or resource production. But with an RR zone, that would be inconsistent, as an example. And so the idea would be to where there is a clear conflict between the general plan designation and the zoning, we would rezone that. We also have the, what have been identified as interim zones, the unclassified, the highway, what's it called?
Service.
Highway service zone, that the intent of, the intent statement, purpose intent statement in the code itself says, this is to be held this way until appropriate zoning is, because it's with the general plan is applied. So the idea would be, we would go through the, any place that's owned unclassified, find an appropriate zone that's consistent with the general plan and have it rezoned so the unclassified zone goes away. Right now, if anyone wants to do anything other than build a house on an unclassified, they have to go through a zoning amendment process because no other uses are essential out other than ag and residential. Most likely, most of those will go to either an A1 or an RA zone, just because that's most where that is, is, you know, there's surrounding zoning. So it would be a combination of, you know, eliminating those interim zones and bringing the non-compliant zoning into conformance with the general plan.
And how much time do you, generically, because I know saying, well, I want it done by X state is not realistic, but is it something that could be done in 2020 or by the end of 21?
I believe that could be done in 2020. We've already got to start on that as well.
Okay. I understand your priorities. I'm trying to determine in my mind what would be short-term that could be done and one that we would want if the board so chooses to hire a consultant to help with the zoning code update and which ones would possibly lie within your department or Public Works Like you mentioned, that Mr. Park said the traffic impact study guidelines, he was already working on that? And I don't know what that-
That's something that he felt could be fairly quickly done. I don't know if he's working on it already. I know that his prior, one of his prior jurisdictions he worked for, he had prepared a similar document there, so, you know, it would be something that would be fairly easily translated to our needs here.
So if I'm understanding you correctly, you're looking at maybe starting on the rewrite and then do some simple code that would just be worked in, be done by your staff or could be done by any of the other department's staffs?
I wouldn't use the word simple. None of these are simple.
Okay. That was my word here, I'll cross that out.
But I think that they are a more immediate concern that rather than wait until we do the whole thing, that's something that we might want to-
Like a vacation rental ordinance?
Right. For a special-
Which will be highly controversial-
Oh, yes.
Even though it might be easy to write. Excuse me. I guess I shouldn't use that word either.
Narrowly focused.
Narrowly focused. Okay, thank you. On the infill incentives and bringing growth within community centers, we discuss that a lot during community plans, during the general plan. What would that look like? I'm not clear incentive to me means, are we giving off-
Well, we'd start off by identifying where we have the infrastructure and the land available to promote infill. And then working with the development community, with economic development, with community members as a whole, what could we do to create incentives? I don't know what those are right now. If I did, I'd be, you know, making lots of money as a consultant, but, you know, but working with experts in the field to try to develop something that when someone says, hey, there's some land available, I could make some money by developing this with the kind of development that we want to see in our community, whether it be commercial or industrial land, as Supervisor Mills has pointed out, whether it's more affordable housing, whether it's just, you know, general workforce housing, whatever it might be that we think is needed in the community and available. So I'm trying to think of some examples of what might be an incentive, but because it's infill, a lot of what's going on at the state level right now is, it's sort of almost requiring that the developers maximize the amount of housing that's developed within communities where there is transportation resources, for example. We're not facing that same kind of dilemma to the degree that you would have in urban centers, but at the same time, we have, you know, a lot of people looking for housing where they work and unable to find it. So are there ways that we can reduce costs, reduce time? Because time is money when it comes to development process. Are there other programs out there that would incentivize the use of those properties that are within or adjacent to the existing community rather than trying to, well, it's, you know, build out here where the land might be cheaper? How can we incentivize those areas that we think are most appropriate? And I think understanding the infrastructure, the roads, the sewer, the water, power needs for development can really help in identifying, you know, what land is most suitable. That's something that the development community goes to anyway, but if we can sort of jumpstart that by, you know, by having that information available in, you know, maybe there's one source and they go to our Economic Development Coordinator and someone's looking for a piece of property to develop, you know, some type of business that we can say, oh, here are five locations available and here are the programs that we have that bring jobs to our community, for example. I don't know what that is, but that's something that that program would develop over the next year or so.
So if I understand, under state law now, homeowner associations cannot restrict secondary dwelling units or, and so if I'm allowed to have a 900 square foot secondary dwelling unit on my property, but my septic system or the sewer system's designed for a three-bedroom, I'm now adding the fourth, would we then have to change that requirement?
Well, we would still need to meet whatever health and safety standards are out there. And it might mean you need to extend the leach line to support that or, you know, if it's cooked up to a public sewer, we can work with the sewer providers as to, you know, ways to maybe reduce those costs so that it's, you know, they have to pay their, they have, the CCWD or other sewer providers, you know, have to be able to run their systems. And so, you know, you have to pay the hookup fees, you have to pay the cost of that, but are there ways that we can balance the costs? I'm not sure. I think there's at least one district where it costs the same hookup to a primary structure as it does to a secondary structure even though it's, you know, maybe a third of the size of the primary residence. You know, maybe there are ways that we can work with them to, you know, tweak the rate structure a little bit so that, we're getting into the weeds now and so I don't want to get too far down.
That's fine.
But those are examples of some of the things that we as a county can do to incentivize infill.
I mean, I will mention my favorite, which I have for years and years. It's a lighting dark sky ordinance.
I figured that would be on the list.
So, I mean, if, I'm not looking at, I can understand why these would take precedent, but if that could be managed somehow, I'd like to see that, if it fits. Okay, are there any other questions or comments from the board? All right, I'd like to open it up to public comments. And if you have any questions, we'll save them till the end.
Good morning, Madam Chair.
Pardon?
Supervisor, staff. We'd like a little clarification. My understanding when the ADU process was being folded into the general plan, that it included language saying that the septic systems would not be reevaluated. That's also my understanding from the Advisory Committee in Building. Because that's going to be a monkey wrench for ADUs if you make septic evaluation part of it. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I'm Will Moore in Rancho Calaveras and I want to agree with Supervisor Mills that we need a facility to process some of our biofuel instead of trucking it off somewhere else. But I have a more personal issue, concern here, and it's on page 13. It's about this infill idea. And I live in Rancho Calaveras in a small house on a one-acre lot and most of the value of that place is in the lot. The house isn't worth all that much. And I had a conversation with a person here a while ago who I believe lives in Rancho Calaveras and she's a strong advocate of infill. Infill, infill. And I'm kind of an opponent of the urban sprawl problem. an opponent of the urban sprawl problem myself. But it's an issue of owning horses. I mean, I, the way the thing is zoned now, I could own a horse, or chickens, or maybe a cow. I don't know. But, you know, I grew up logging with horses and farming with horses, and I have no, I, no desire to own a horse. But I feel that a lot of the value of my place is tied up in that ability to own a horse. I mean, I don't want one, but somebody else might. And I'm concerned that this infill idea is in conflict with this, you know, limited agriculture idea for Rancho Calaveras. If you put enough people in there, nobody's going to be allowed to have, you know, farm animals or anything. So, I, I don't know if I have a question. It's just a concern that the infill idea is kind of in conflict or my personal, my personal interests are in conflict with, with the infill idea. Anyhow, thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I'm kind of waiting for those papers to make their way to you. I know Peter said that his focus today isn't on the housing element, that he's mostly dealing with that separately. But I am particularly focused on-
Tom, can you speak up, please?
Sure. Thank you. I'm particularly focused on, I want to bring your focus to a particular part of the housing element. So you have now before you a printout of three implementation programs from page 138 of the housing element you adopted last year. So, this board unanimously mandated going ahead with the planning commission's recommendation of a low-density rural owner-built dwelling code ordinance promoting rehousing in the Butte Fire Burn Scar, along with your commitment to implement these programs within a specified time. Thanks for that. And on the printout, you can see H1 at the top and H1K at the bottom, that I've underlined in blue, have timelines calling for implementation by the end of 2019. Today's January 20, 2020, as you know, and as far as I'm aware, no further action has yet been taken. The planning commission knew that was an ambitious timeframe, and I commend them for setting it to try to push it along. And for the hundreds or more of us living in the Burn Scar and a number of property owners who are temporarily housed elsewhere but hoping to return, it's a matter of some urgency. And this being a study session to set priorities for programs and policies in the GPU, I'm here to ask that you move this to the very front of the line where it belongs, as it's already supposed to have been implemented. Staff report on today's agenda recommending priorities doesn't mention this, and now I know why, because we weren't really dealing with the housing element. He's tried to make that separate. The second implementation measure on the list, H1J, is about creating incentives for replacement of structures lost in disasters. I would urge you to put that into place immediately, along with the other two. Because if one home was lost to a fire and the residents moved into a rental, that's two homes off the market. For every one of those homes that gets replaced and others freed up, that's a double benefit. And then there's property taxes lost, high cost to permit fees and other costs associated with regulatory compliance of discouraged rebuilding. And this is costing the county a lot, property taxes you would have already collected if regulations, some of which you control and some of which you don't, didn't make it so damn hard. Which brings me to the state mandate for counties to remove barriers to affordable housing. I know the state demands that you increase access to affordable housing while at the same time imposing regulations that drive the costs up, as you've mentioned. Through Title 25, the state actually empowers you to meet that demand in rural areas, so I encourage you to please do it. So, and please schedule a housing workshop, as mentioned, as soon as possible. Thank you.
Good morning. Terry McBride, Butte Fire Zone, District 2, living in a camping trailer almost four and a half years later. I think it's really easy for folks sitting up here at this dais to forget about us, because you get to go home to a house and a kitchen and a yard. And you don't have to worry about cutting down all these dead trees and clearing and doing all the work that we do on a daily basis, which I can't tell you how much I would love a hot bathtub to get into after cutting wood all damn day. Part of the reason we aren't is some of us have got thoroughly blindsided by the solace, ethically, morally corrupt, bankrupt, PG&E, so we don't have the money. But when we do, what's finding out is they can't afford it because of the cost of building nowadays. We are rebuilding houses that were there, that I got to figure, and I have paid tens of thousands of dollars in property taxes with my house. That's not even including the rentals I lost. Probably, we're probably well long past hundreds of thousands in the value that I've paid over the years, my dad paid over the years. Some of what they're looking at on this Title 25 is how my dad used to build, Sheldon Bissell. There's more than a few people in District 2 still living in houses that he built. And they were built along the line of this Title 25. So I have to wonder, how is it that this got forgotten? When you have so many of us that still pay property taxes, that still contribute to this community, have been forgotten, when something as simple as Title 25 would allow them to get back under a roof? Because a camping trailer is not the roof you really want to live under. And I would like you to drive around and look at how many people are still living like that. It's not fun. I'm here to tell you, it's not fun at all. And you have it within your hands, within your ability to make it so that once we finally get our monies that are due to us, we can rebuild at a reasonable sum. And we can move into the house before it's completed, which is how dad used to do the houses, all the time. And there shouldn't be any problem with that. A lot of people bought modulators, you know, and that's fine. You do what you got to do at the time. But a lot of the reason for that was because of the high cost of rebuilding. A modular, they can call it what it is. It's still not a stick frame. And, when you're a contractor's daughter, that's my favorite, to stick frame home. So anyway, I'm putting my two cents in. I ask that you guys get pushing on this thing. Do not put it down another year and a half. That's disgusting. And let's get people into rebuild houses on their properties in the Butte Fire Zone. Thanks so much.
Tom and Vasino, Calaveras Planning Coalition. We suggest a couple of additions to the planning department's priority list, and we have the following questions. First, will you please add evaluation and mitigation of impacts to resource production lands to the top priority list? That's RP 1D and RP 1F. The Ag Coalition worked hard with the county for years to develop a resource production land mitigation standard. The sooner the new standard is approved, the better. Second, will you consider prioritizing the standalone implementation measures? Based upon our brief and preliminary review, our highest priority items from that list in the staff report are lighting and glare, LU-4B, innovative techniques, LU-2E, open space zoning, COS-1A, and scenic resources, COS-6A. Third, will you roll out development incentives and development conditions together? This will assist applicants and expedite development review process. If instead, you roll out the development incentives ahead of the development conditions, you'll make future development proposals far more controversial than they need to be. Fourth, will you, we, in, in the future, will you include communities in the implementation decisions? Please hold timely workshops to consult your constituents and their communities prior to selecting implementation priorities next year, because you'll be doing this every year. Fifth, will you assure us that your development project review staff will be implementing the 49 measures related to project review that are in the general plan update? On December 12, we ask the project review staff be made aware of these new requirements and that instructions be provided for development applicants. Please let us know the status of the implementation for these 49 measures. Sixth, will you complete the comprehensive update of the zoning code before or with the zoning map update? People will be more comfortable with a zone change on their property, once they know that the use to which they want to put that property will still be allowed. Finally, the staff report indicates there will be $177,000 available in the budget that could be used for consultants. Before the taxpayers are asked to shell out another $177,000 for consultants, please let us know. Will the taxpayers get to review the work product of these consultants? Or will the taxpayers be expected to finance a shadow bureaucracy whose work products will be hidden from the public? Thank you.
Mr. Vasino, you keep saying "we." Are you speaking in behalf of yourself or the planning?
Calaveras Planning Coalition. The first thing I said was Tom Vasino, Calaveras Planning Coalition.
Okay. Thank you.
I did indicate in my email that because of the holiday, we were only able to give a preliminary review of this. Only a, a portion of our members were available to comment.
Okay. Thank you.
Marty Crane, Rancho Calaveras. Marita, thank you for bringing up nice skies. If there was ever a project to work on, that should be one of the easier ones, I think. Because in all the planning commission meetings I've been to, when there's a project that comes forward and we recommend or ask the developer to, can you please just turn the lights down and turn the volume down? They're more than happy to do that. It's not a difficult thing. So, I would recommend that we push that up on the list. It's not going to take all, a week or anything like that. Anyway. And then also, I don't think that the people of Rancho know that you eliminated their plan for many, many years. I know you took pieces out of it and added it into the, the general plan, but that's not their plan. And so, I've heard, for 30 years, I've heard, "Don't touch our plan. Don't touch our plan. It's our plan." And people were promised, made promises for all these years. And now to change that, when they don't want their plan changed, is inappropriate, I think. So, anyway, thank you.
Good morning, supervisors. I'm Robert Scott. I'm a relocated homeowner that's been out of our home since the Butte Fire. And I'm speaking in support of the objectives of getting to, get people back in their homes and in Title 25 as an option for us to be able to take advantage of. Now, I've been working in building codes for almost 30 years, and I know what it's like watching grass grow. But I think this is an opportunity where you already have identified three elements, including the limited rural owner-builder regulation. You have the replacement of incentives to help us do that. And then also, housing workshops that we've already called for, that, you know, a number of us in the community have already been collaborating together to see some of these things happen. And here's an objective way to create additional options for recovery in this area. And again, as many, you know, as has already been said, you know, recover things like tax revenue, more than we're paying now. But some of us are still paying it. So, anyway. And I would really encourage you to take advantage of this, because there are options, there are things we can do, and there's a framework that you can already work within. So, and I encourage us to ask the building department to move forward on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Scott.
Good morning, supervisors. Al Segala, Taxpayer Association. Boy, there's a lot of work here. I wonder if anybody here has read this whole thing? There's 230 items, and they're on 30, 34 pages. And I, when I looked at this, I tried to read the whole thing, and I couldn't do it. And I wondered, in fact, I felt sorry for Peter. I thought that he'd have a nervous breakdown trying to, to be responsible for all this. And I, I think the main point that I find that should be paid more attention to, and this is basic property rights. We're not talking about government-owned property. We're talking about private property. And we're talking about imposing regulations and rules on that private property. We're also talking about taxation, not just to support bureaucracy, but taxation for other purposes, too, which could also include redistribution of wealth. I, I think the most important thing is property rights. We need to ask the question, just what are property rights? A best reference that I can think of is our constitution. In the Fifth and Fourteenth Amendment, they're very clear exactly what they are. Life, liberty, and property. Those are repeated in both those amendments, exactly that way. There is no word of, of democracy. There's no word of, of pursuit of happiness. That's in the Declaration of Independence. Pursuit of happiness is actually maybe a combination of property rights and liberty. So, looking at what, being on more on the positive side, there's two things here that look like it's pretty promising. One is the mixed-use zoning allows flexibility. When you allow flexibility, you're accenting property rights. It allows the property owner to have more decision-making power of what he wants to do with his property. It makes sense. And, and so, mixed-use zoning, for that viewpoint, does make sense and could be a good thing. Another one is innovative technologies. That, that is another positive thing. Sometimes, the Soviet Union tried to plan everything, whole society, almost like what we're trying to do now. And it came out to be a total failure, because they took a snapshot of, a snapshot of what is and thought that that's the way it's going to be, and then tried to manipulate from that snapshot. But life, the economy, oh, darn it. It just got warmed up. Thank you.
I concur with, I'm in the Buttes Fire Burn Scar, four and a half years later, in a little plastic and tin foil trailer up on, up in the air. And I would like to be on the ground in something solid. And I support what the CPC comments were, with one exception, is that I would like to see the consideration of the Title 25 prioritized before all of those things. We've been waiting long enough.
My name's Steven Wasick. I'm also from the Burn area. Just listening to you, I, I agree with all my fellows there on that. And it's interesting, when I hear that you guys are speaking about the, the housing, how it's now, it's going to be a few months before somebody gets entered to study this and gets put on there. And then, Mr. Guermini, you're saying how all these things that he's talking about have to work together to have it, because they all work off of one another. Well, the housing element also does that, because you've got your low-income element, you've got your workforce housing, all that. And that's not being implemented when you guys are doing all these other things. And I think that's very important to put in there. You know, it's just not us in the Burn. Like I say, it's low-income housing. And you guys see the importance, what's going on, you know, with the, all the fees and all that other stuff. It's put forth in campaign promises and campaign slogans and everything else. They, you know, you guys hear us, you put it out there, yeah, yeah, we're going to. But then, when we get here, it puts off, it's put off, it's put off. And so I just, you know, I'd like to see it all come together and get this housing going on there, so you guys have the information in your hands, so that when you guys are doing all these other tasks. Anyway, that's it.
Thank you. Are there any other public comments?
I'm Leslie Cullum, and I had a home in Mountain Ranch. And I'm also speaking in favor of prioritizing consideration of Title 25. I remember a board of supervisors meeting in August of 2018. And I remember there was a discussion, it was about allowing folks to stay in their trailers longer. And I remember there was a discussion between Peter and Jack, and Dennis spoke to. And it was about that there were hundreds of people that were living in their RVs. And I want to say that those people, I'm not one of those people. I'm lucky. We can afford rent. But those people aren't here because they're too busy, you know, doing what they need to do, living in those RVs, just as Terry mentioned. So, they are fixing the leaks in the RVs. They are raising children, of course. They are raising children, of course. They are cutting wood to stay warm. There are also folks that aren't here because they don't believe that government will help them out anymore. They're cynical. And some folks don't know that their voice can be heard here, and they are too, maybe too intimidated at this point to speak up. I'm a little intimidated. I'm a little nervous, and I've spoken a few times. And some just don't know how to be heard. I don't live in a trailer. I'm taking up a rental space. We are in our third rental. This third one just about got caught, sold from under us. We made an agreement to pay their increased property tax so we could stay there and not have to move. There are also other people in my situation that are living in rentals because they haven't rebuilt. My husband and I are part of the thousand people that are still in litigation with PG&E. We were underinsured. And we believe that at our age, we don't know what our building budget is. That's our reality. We don't know what our building budget is. I'm 62, he's 65. We can't accrue more debt at this time in our life. So, we are looking for a more affordable option, and that's Title 25. And that would put us back on our property. I could put more bulbs in. I could have a real garden again. I could not be in a rental, not be in a rental, which is not my home. Everything's just not permanent. Furniture's not permanent. Bedding's not permanent because we're trying to save our money so we can have a house One of you, at least one of you, has said, as you have campaigned to stay in place here, to remain in place here, that regulations, as regulations grow, the cost to build new infrastructures... Oh, I'm running out of time.
Thank you.
So much to say.
Good morning, and Happy New Year. Except, there are still hundreds of people living out there in very desperate conditions, and they need help. And the money from the PG&E lawsuit that's going to go to reinvesting or redoing the roads in D-2, that's somewhat reassuring. But knowing that, to have the certainty that we could rebuild ourselves more affordably would help reduce a lot of the stress that many of us are still impacted by. It's been very traumatic, and it would be greatly appreciated if you could get Title 25 implemented and make that a priority. Thank you.
Any more public comments? Okay, I'm going to call public comment. And before I, we answer some of the questions, I want to take a 10-minute recess, please. Thank you.
Mary.
Okay, we convened the meeting. Mr. Maurer, we had several questions from people in the audience. Would you, between you and I, see if we can get them covered?
Sure. And maybe I'll start with some of the comments that were made by the board members. Supervisor Mills, you brought up the issue about resiliency centers. One of the policies of the plan was to incorporate by reference the hazard mitigation plan that we worked on with OES. And that's something that we'll continue to update on a regular basis and include resiliency centers. So, I'll be working with John on that. Supervisor Hoffmanelli, you brought up the concern about a fire marshal. And I know that Doug Oliver, the building official, has been working with the fire chiefs. They can't remember that.
Bring this closer. I know that Doug Oliver, the building official, has been working with the fire chiefs in different districts to try to have a more consistent process, whether it's a county-wide, each district varies a little bit, but that's something that he is working on diligently to try to resolve that issue. So, that's something that's ongoing. There were several speakers that talked about the Title 25 and the housing element policies that the board directed us to pursue. I want to assure them we are working on those. That is a high priority for us, and that is already identified by the board as something that we intend to do. And we're working on that. We have a little bit of delay. Those programs were going to be funded by a grant from the state. The grant program was supposed to have been wrapped up by November. They're still working on it right now, and I expect to hear within the next week or two to be awarded that grant to go forward. So, then we'll move forward with that. So, that already is a priority. It's already identified by the board. So, I wanted to assure them we are working on that. That's not going to be set aside at all.
Approximately when?
I'm hoping by the end of the month that the HCD will have identified that we qualified for that grant. It's not a competitive grant. It was a allocated, you know, $160,000 allocated to the county as long as the program qualified. And I just worked last week with, you know, trying to fine-tune that, to give them the information that they needed to ensure that it meets the criteria.
I guess my question was, sorry, Mr. Chet. When will the board be seeing it?
When will the board be seeing it? Well, the first thing would be what was to hold some community workshops. Then, the other one was the development of the Title 25 regulations, and I'll be working with Doug on that. I know he's very supportive of that. I don't have a timeframe for you yet on that. Mr. Moore brought up the question about biofuel. And we do have an approved project to do a biofuel project in the Wilseyville area. Unfortunately, that was relying on PG&E purchase of the power that would be generated. And I've met, just last month, with the proponents of that project to look at interim uses of that facility that would be consistent with the permit that was issued. But because of the bankruptcy, PG&E won't commit to the funding or to purchase of the power. And then, the funders of that project are unwilling to release their funds without that commitment. So, now they're trying to look at interim steps to get that up and running. But no use of the excessive fuels that we have, especially with all of the tree mortality and the fire clearing that's being done, no sense in shipping it to Anderson or Madera County. We want to utilize that here. So, that is something that the private sector is pursuing with assistance of the county. Ms. Calaveras, were there other questions that you had noted?
Well, we'll have one. The infill, an urban sprawl, I mean, if he can have a horse on his...
Oh, yes.
...or animals.
So, the infill would be based on what the land use designations are under the general plan. And as far as Rancho Calaveras is concerned, that's not changing. That was very clear during the general plan hearings with the planning commission, particularly although I think there was some also discussion here at the board, but it had been pretty much resolved when the special policies for Rancho Calaveras were included in the plan as well as the land use map. That Rancho Calaveras is staying the same. There are areas in the county that are appropriate for, you know, larger rural lots where animals, and that's a part of the draw to those counties, being able to have animals if you want them. You don't have to have a horse, but you can if you want to. But there are also areas where a higher density or intensity use is appropriate. Doesn't mean we're going to be plopping down a fourplex in the middle of Rancho Calaveras. That's not what that land use designation calls for. So, wouldn't, don't expect to see changes in Rancho, but there are some, you know, other vacant parcels in, you know, within communities of Valley Springs or San Andreas or Copperopolis, you name it, that are appropriate for a higher intensity use. And that's what we'd be looking for, to try to figure out a way to encourage that kind of development. During the break, Supervisor Mills brought up the issue of clustering, and that is something that is allowed today under any kind of development and, you know, possibility under this implementation measure. Well, how do we, how do we incentivize clustering? You know, for example, if you have a, you know, a 20-acre parcel that's zoned for 1-acre parcels, you know, you could have 21-acre lots. But maybe a more effective use of the property and more cost-effective development would be to have 20 quarter-acre lots with the remaining 15 acres being, you know, an open-space parcel or something. So, those are the kind of things that can accomplish many goals, you know, resource protection, whether it's biological resources, water resources, as well as reduction in cost of infrastructure. So, you don't have to run the water lines and sewer lines and roads as far. And so, it reduces the overall cost of that kind of development. It's not for everywhere, but, you know, where an applicant finds that that makes sense for the type of development that he or she wants to do, we should be able to encourage that. And if there's a way that we can incentivize it in ways that make sense for the community as well as for the applicant, then we should be looking at those kinds of solutions.
Just to follow up on that, when you were talking about Rancho Calaveras and staying the same, there was another commenter that brought up that we pulled the Rancho Calaveras community plan out of it. And that's not necessarily what happened. What we, what we did was, the CCNRs that were originally in the Rancho Calaveras plan are part of the general plan as it was instated as one of the community plans, correct?
Well, not, not, well, the CCNRs are not a part of the plan. The CCNRs still apply to the property. CCNRs are private agreements between the buyer and seller of property, and the county does not get involved in those private agreements. We don't enforce them, but we also consider them when we're looking at some discretionary projects. But as far as, you know, regular review of CCNRs or compliance with the building permit, that's not something that we do. But when, when we were looking at the land use map and considering including community-specific policies in the community planning element of the general plan, and you were on the planning commission when we discussed Rancho Calaveras, we tried to, and I hope we're successful, in incorporating the key policies that made Rancho unique, just as we did with many of the other communities in the county, and we intend to do with the remaining communities over, you know, over time. So, starting with Valley Springs and Copperopolis. Thank you.
Mr. Muterties brought up the septic systems will kill projects if, with the accessory dwelling units.
Well, I'm not exactly sure what...
If I understood your comment, Mr. Muterties.
We were initially under the impression, based on what was going on with the planning commission and the general plan, and then also comments that we, and questions and answers we received in the advisory committee to building, and they had told us that it would not be required to reevaluate septic to put in an ADU. Unfortunately, if you do that, it's going to drive the cost up, and it's going to keep people from doing it. And with facing the 30-foot setbacks that have been forced upon us by Cal Fire, that's wiping out a lot of your building stock to begin with, and the ADUs may be the only thing you have left to see any kind of infill as far as housing.
Okay, thank you.
I understand now. So, about a year and a half ago, we adopted a new ADU ordinance to come into compliance with state law. As we were reviewing that, we found that the review process for an ADU for review of septic systems was more stringent than for a primary residence. That was dropped from that ordinance. Now, you still have to ensure that you meet the basic health standards of connection to public sewer or have an adequate septic system to support an ADU, but we don't have an excessive requirement. It's basically the same requirement you would have of constructing a new residence or expanding. If you've got a three-bedroom house, you're expanding it to a four-bedroom, you may have to increase the length of the leach line, for example. But that's no different than any other construction that would occur. And I think that may be what Mr. Muterties was referring to. Previously, we had a higher level of review process for an ADU than we did for the initial primary residence. That no longer exists.
Okay, thank you. And the last were some of the comments that Mr. Emfesimo made. He wanted an evaluation regarding development conditions. Before we do the map, I thought that was a question I had asked you at the beginning, why we would be doing the map?
Yeah.
And he had other items.
You know, the other items that's, you know, on the table as far as, you know, board priority, I, you know...
Okay.
You know, many of those, yeah, we certainly, if that's the desire of the board, you know, we could prioritize those rather than others. Many of them sort of match some of the things I had suggested. The development of a mitigation program for loss of agricultural land, for example. The first step of that is identifying what's the, what's the important one, which we're, I recommend that we undertake right away. If the board wants to make that a higher priority, that's certainly within your prerogative to do so. We will be reviewing, you know, development against the new general plan. And so, I can assure you that that's part of what we have to do. That's part of our process.
Okay.
You know, it's...
The last one was a dark sky or dense?
And that's one of those specific ordinances that we can certainly take up, you know, while we're working on a comprehensive zoning ordinance update. And I know that that was something that, you know, several planning commissioners have mentioned in the past, as being important to them. It's come up many times throughout the hearings on the general plan. And again, that's, that's a policy call by the board of where you want to put that in the hierarchy of measures.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Mills?
Yes, just wanted to throw this out there. This is on page, back at page 17, C4A about private airstrip standards. It's interesting, we do have an active private airstrip in the Copperopolis basin, as you know. As that area intensifies in terms of housing units, I'm sure that there's going to be some desire to not take it out of grass strip, but get it into more of a safe working zone. So, I just, I don't know where else this would apply in Calaveras County? Or there's plans for new private airstrip in Valley Springs or something?
There's one in Wallace right now, and it has residential facilities around.
Yeah, so, just wanted to bring it up.
Yeah.
Peter, going through your list here that you provided to us, and all the items that you listed as one time, once, and additional ordinances like the dark sky, so forth, I would like to see, as, and you mentioned earlier, about a hybrid plan for zoning code updates. I would like to see the priority of just the zones that we have initially starting is cleaning up all of the vague language that's in these zones that becomes a problem. Just to point out one, in residential, accepted farming practices. How many times is that, what does that mean? It's become a problem. And I think those type of things need to be cleared up, and we need to be very careful when we're crafting these other ordinances and bringing them forward, that we don't have that vague language in there. It's very upright, straightforward, this is it, and there's no curving around it. It's created so many problems over the course of the years that it's been in, some of this language has been in there. And you know that it has in planning... language has been in there, and you knows that it has in planning, I mean, the building department knows this too. So if we can just get the board, we can talk about discussing that, at least initially on that hybrid portion that you were talking about, we start with just cleaning up the language that we have in some of these ordinances.
Are there any other comments from my colleagues? Mr. Mauer, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Quite a few things that were brought up by both the public and everything that I do agree with. You know, one person brought me, brought up to me when we were out discussing during break, the state had cut a lot of the red tape for fire victims when it came to rebuilding, not long after the Butte Fire. I'm not sure if the county fully followed suit with that, but is that red tape still cut out there? And is there a clear path to us beyond, you know, what was discussed on Title 25 of being able to help these people get their homes rebuilt in the Burn scar?
So right after, excuse me, right after the Butte Fire, the county adopted an urgency ordinance that provided some streamlining as well as procedures in place to ensure public safety. That became a permanent ordinance a couple of years later, and we have now extended that twice, that allows people to live in temporary provisions, you know, on their property. Whether or not it fully cuts red tape is public debatable. It reduced some, it may have increased some in some other areas to ensure that public safety requirements are met. So it's something we'll probably end up having to discuss again later this year as the timeframe, right now, we're extending the provision of that ordinance for an additional year each year as we sort of assess how things are going. Given what I heard today, it sounds like there's still a lot of people that are unable because of the issues with PG&E and other reasons to rebuild, which is ultimately, I think, the goal of everyone here, is to allow people to rebuild the property, on their property, rebuild their homes. And, you know, the, some of the things that we will be moving forward on the housing element, or is intended to address that need. So have we fully cut red tape? No. Have we reduced it? I would like to think so. I'm sure that there are people that would probably say, no, you haven't, but that's the nature of government.
That answers my question. That brings me to the next step, is yes, you are doing the housing element separately from this right now, but it does all, it does all work together.
It all dovetails, yes.
And I did attend CSAC, and I was there when you did a presentation on affordable housing, and, you know, I think LA County was there, right with you?
Right.
And a lot of these issues that are being put forward by the state that I brought up here afterwards when I reported out on the meeting, raised prices on costs on building. And some of these, the, these, sorry, excuse me, reaching forward, some of these things that we're putting forward in the general plan also do somewhat the same thing. And now the state's going to, saying that they're going to start holding us accountable on putting forward more affordable housing. One way, I mean, we talk about infill, all this has to coincide, because we talk about infill and filling out, you know, buildable areas where it has, where it has the infrastructure to be able to support, you know, development. But we also have areas surrounding those that have been put into resource production, where we're going to actually have people possibly two to one, you know, have to mitigate that by setting so much land aside, which brings up the cost on development and building once again. So maybe as we move forward, maybe some thoughts on some exemptions, if they were in the certain areas that are within these areas that could be considered on infill and so on, could be part of the discussion as we, as we put forward rewrite this comprehensively. Am I making sense where I'm going?
Yeah, I understand what you're saying. That's the kind of detail that we need to get into as we start implementing these programs. We've identified, you know, a dozen or so things, and we have to drill down into the specifics of how that's going to work, and what makes the most sense for Calaveras County, and how's it going to balance the competing needs of, you know, different sectors of our economy and the community. You know, protecting farmland's important, but providing housing is also important. How do we balance those competing needs? You know, identifying areas that's not important farmland is sort of the first area. We've identified lots of areas for future development, and, you know, throughout the county, there's areas that have been identified that this is appropriate because of infrastructure, because of access, because of surrounding land use patterns. This is where we want to see development. Out here, where it's away from infrastructure, it's remote, not appropriate, and so that's why it's designated as forestry or agriculture or something else. And so, you know, that can change over time, and that's the whole point of going back and revisiting this. You know, how are we meeting our housing needs? How is the economy doing? Do we have enough land available for industrial development, for example, or commercial development? Are we getting the retail stores that we hope to be able to support our community here? If not, why? Is it something the county controls, or is it something that is a broader macroeconomic issue that, you know, we just don't have the population basis support, the kind of stores that people would like to see, so they end up driving to Amador or Toomey or Stockton for? So those are the kind of things, the bigger picture issues that we need to look at, but if we can identify something that says, here's a problem that we've created through our general plan, well, that's when we need to go back and fix it.
I feel like I've been hearing this conversation for 20 years.
I'm sure you have.
It hasn't changed. Mr. Gueramendi?
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. I think as we set our priorities, first off, Peter, you are a workhorse. You get a lot of work done, and I appreciate that. As we set our priorities, I hope that we can maybe move, listen to this conversation, really the ag piece as we deal with mitigations and how that all comes together. We talked about where there's a confluence of concepts that we need to work out together. I think maybe we ought to move the ag up a little bit, because as several people here have already said, without that knowledge, it's pretty hard to do the next steps, especially when we've left it pretty broad in the general plan. So nailing that down, and as we discuss the general plan, you know, we really do need to find that balance, because people move here because of our beautiful county and our viewscapes, and they're tremendous. What we don't want to do is, in an effort to create more housing, destroy the thing that people come here for. So there's a balance to be had, and I think we can achieve that. Hopefully, it won't take 20 years to wrap that up. And also, I look forward as that plays into what are the infill incentives. As we mentioned, we don't know what they are yet, but that's going to be some real creativity, trying to figure out what tools and levers we actually have to achieve that goal. I'm not familiar, and just, I'm glad we're working on Title 25, and I wish, nobody on this board was here in 2016 when we decided not to waive a lot of the fees for rebuilding or figure out some creative solutions. But, you know, in hindsight, it's always 2020, but I really wish we had. But, you know, there were a lot of other overriding considerations, as well as plenty of chaos at that time. So, you know, thank you for your work, and let's keep going forward.
Mr. Mauer gave us, identified some of the highest, excuse me, his perception of the highest priorities with the addition of agriculture that Mr. Gueramendi just talked about. Are there any that you would like to see removed, added, or modified in any way? We need to give some direction. I'll just start out, I, on the comprehensive zoning ordinance update, I would like to see us, and even though you hire a consultant, if I read your board packet correctly, it still will take a few years to accomplish that. I would like us to start looking at how we do it. You'd have to work with the CAO in terms of budget and finance and how we would fund it, and the board would need to be reminded at budget time that that's a priority after the animal shelter. So I think we need to do that. I would like to see the zoning map updated and not wait until the ordinance is done.
Can I just make a comment? Peter, you have that comprehensive zoning ordinance update here as one of the top priorities, but when you, when we opened up earlier, again, and getting back to, you elaborated, you didn't, you never elaborated on what your view of a hybrid was, that you were, as opposed to this. Are you talking about a hybrid, just initially get things going and clearing up some things that we have existing, and then while this is going on, the comprehensive, or what was your, what was your view?
So, yeah, it would be sort of working on both at the same time. So we identify, you know, a handful of very specific ordinance amendments we need to make right away, that we can't wait for two to three years on. But while we are looking comprehensively at everything, we've also, you know, picked out a couple of key issues that could be addressed in a more immediate timeframe.
So do we need, excuse me, so do we need to add that to this list then as a separate item?
That would be helpful.
Okay.
Okay. And how would, how would you like that? I apologize. How would you like that?
Well, maybe a sort of poll of the board would be, you know, is it a dark skies ordinance? Is it, you know, vacation rental? Whatever the issues are that you feel are something we need to address right away, and that's something that I and my staff can work on while the consultant begins some of the early work on the comprehensive update.
Well, some you have, like the vacation rental ordinance is on here.
Yes.
And it has raised, it said, I don't know about all the districts, but it has, in District Three. So what you're talking about, there were some short, that would be short spans of required staff time to accomplish those, to clear up some of the ones that get talked about.
Yes, in comparison with the comprehensive update, it's something we can focus attention on. You know, again, these are controversial issues, it's not going to be wrapped up in a month, but there's something that we can be working on to, you know, within the next year, get those issues resolved in a more timely fashion than we would if we waited until we had everything together.
Looking and reading this, and after our discussion here, there's certain things that I think need to fall in place for us to get the job done properly as we move forward. Like when we talk about countywide zoning map update, and then we also talk about the agricultural resource that Mr. Gueramendi has brought up, and then even with, if we're going to consider even exemptions for mitigation impacts from resource production land, we need to get our farmland mapping first. So that would be a high priority in my mind, so that we could successfully identify what the farmland mapping, where it is, and then we could start moving forward on, you know, a few of the other things.
Right, and that's why I included that in this list.
Yeah, I appreciate that, I understand that. And it also would go with, I mean, a lot of these kind of do cross over again, agriculture, oak woodland mitigation program, resource production mitigation, and farmland. So I think those would, you know, you know it better than I do, but I think that we're on the right course here, we just have to prioritize it based on what, you know, what should follow what.
Right.
So you're recommending that we prioritize what these are? I don't see the need to do that.
I think Peter knows what they need to be, so-
Oh, I thought you were saying-
Right, we're, yeah. But I do, I do think the farmland mapping would go up ahead of the agriculture and the other, other issues in my mind.
So these will be moving sort of in parallel. At one point, we'll be focusing on this, and then there's going to be a gap in the timeframe while, you know, the consultants are doing something or we're waiting on public comment, and then we'll focus attention over here on one staff working on one thing and other staff working on something else. So it's not like this gets done, and then I start on the next one. We'll figure out a way to spread this workload out through my department, using consultants, using other departments' assistants where appropriate, and moving the package forward. It won't all come together, you know, some will be, some will take longer than others, and we might, you know, have some hiccups along the way when we realize that, you know, trying to work out the details of some issue that becomes much more complex than we initially anticipated. But my intent is that we work on this whole package.
Okay.
But not the package of 100 items, the package of 12 items.
Coming, coming to my point, I would concur with Mr. Gueramendi on making the agriculture-
One of those.
One of those that are on the higher end of the priority list.
Do any of you have a, oh, Mr. Mills?
Yes, I had a question regarding the special event ordinance update. What was the purpose of doing that, wanting to get that done?
It is one of the issues that we grapple with on almost a daily basis in our office, what's allowed and what's not, and what zones it's appropriate. It just, it needs refinement. It's now 15 years old. I, you know, we just, we've found through our experience that that part of the code is not as clear as we like it to be. It's creating some conflicts in the community, and I think it's something that needs to be addressed. Some of the standards, you know, there's, for example, you know, you have a venue that maybe has, you know, half a dozen events a year, and yet we require paved parking for that. So it doesn't mean we have to make it the same as every other commercial use, but what's appropriate level of access and parking and safety issues that need to be addressed for these kinds of things.
I guess maybe it was a loaded question, because down in my area, for instance, we have certain venues that have, every weekend, there's an event, so they're having to come get a permit for each event individually, separately, where it's the same over and over again, and there's staff time involved in reviewing that, et cetera. So I hope that we would include, without getting into details, include a way that, where you have these events going in the same place all the time, that we can have maybe a yearly permit or a biannual permit or something like that, too.
Right.
We already know where they're going to be, they've met all the requirements, it's just a matter of all of this paperwork that we generate as a result of these singular event permits. That's part of the problem. Where you've got a unique situation, you'll deal with it on a case-by-case basis.
Right.
If I might add to Supervisor Mills' comments on the event, having read it recently, it is a complete deterrent to anybody participating in it, because it's filled with, as you meant, confusion, risk, and so it doesn't surprise me when people, you know, it'd be pretty hard to have any chicken in a barrel in this county, which is a pretty common-
pretty hard to have any chicken in a barrel in this county, which is a pretty common thing, so I think it'd be good to take a look at it. Otherwise, people are just going to ignore it.
Is there support, is there, is there support for the comprehensive zoning ordinance update and committing budget dollars to that?
You're pulling board?
I'm pulling the board.
You're going to start with down there?
I'll start down there, Mr. Garamendi.
Yes.
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 Mr. Mills?
Yes.
Five yeses on that, and I'm assuming that's something you'll work with the CAO on. That's the one that has sort of a big dollar amount now. So, with the exception of adding an ag, I don't hear any of the board recommending taking any of these items off the table. As much as I want a dark sky ordinance, when you complete one of these, I'd like to slip it in.
And adding this hybrid.
And that, that's correct, and adding the hybrid that you and Supervisor Toffinelli talked about. Are there any other questions or comments from the board before I close this off? Is there any other direction that you need, Mr. Mauer?
Did you want to poll on adding the ag and the hybrid?
No, I was, I just thought I'd order it done.
Might as well throw in dark skies then, too.
All right.
So, as I understand that, yes, you want us to move forward with the comprehensive update, but at the same time, the two items that I identified, the vacation rental ordinance and special event ordinance, we'd be handling sort of separately. We also look at some of those other areas as far as conflicting definitions, and bring those, those back at some point in time, you know, earlier than, than later.
Yeah.
On the special events ordinance update, I think there's a couple of issues that may need to be looked at or may be added to that ordinance when you're giving out permits or writing for, permit for those events is, at least one that I know of that was in my district only had one way in, and it was quite a way up a hill, and there was no dual access out, and they wanted to have up to 100 people. And if something happens, and they were trying to escape, there's only one way in and one way out, so that might, you might want to look at that as part of adding something to that in the ordinance, that it depends on your evacuation, or if something happens.
I think what, you know, with these individual ordinance, what we would do would be to sort of reach out to the stakeholders, including, you know, fire departments, you know, the other county departments that are affected by any of these types of activities, and, you know, those who operate special events, or vacation rentals, or whatever it might be, and find out, you know, what are the needs, what are the concerns, what are the issues, whether they're just, you know, I don't have all the answers, I'm not going to write something. You know, we may end up having another study session specifically about these, if we feel that's appropriate. Those are, just, but again, these are, you know, this, this level, we're at 20,000 feet looking down, is okay, which, which one of these are we going to approach first, and then we'll, we'll develop a work program for each one of these, these tasks.
Mr. Mills?
Yes, going back to the fire marshal, because I know that Supervisor Toffinelli brought it up, it's something I'd been advocating for a long time, and I know that it's difficult to find those, that breed of people. It is a very specialized training process that they go through, and some districts have it, others will probably never have it because they won't financially afford it. And so, how do we, from our side, assist in being sure that the goals that are met to achieve that with those districts that cannot support a fire marshal, you know, don't need to name names, but it's, that is the glitch right now, is how do we get 4290, 4291, and all of those other pieces resolved, when they can't afford a person, and they're very difficult, even the county, we can't find somebody to fill that role. So, I'm just leaving it as an open-ended question.
That's good, because I don't have an answer for it.
Okay. Mr. Garamendi?
Ma'am.
So, as I was told by my colleague to my left, take a poll on adding agriculture as recommended by Supervisor Garamendi. I'll start with Supervisor Garamendi, I'm assuming he's not going to change his mind. He says yes, and Mr. Stopper already said he'd support it, so he's a yes.
Yes.
Mr. Toffinelli, Mr. Mills?
Yes.
Ms. Callaway, yes, five yeses on that, and you said there was one more.
Hybrid.
The hybrid, I thought I already made the decision, but I'm having to learn. Mr. Toffinelli?
Yes.
Mr. Mills?
Yes.
Mr. Stopper?
Sure.
Mr. Garamendi?
Aye.
Passes on a five vote on that. There's nothing else from your perspective?
I think I've got my marching orders.
Okay, thank you. We look forward, this was quite an effort on your part, and it was, as Mr. Segal has said, quite a challenge to go through this, but it was well done, thank you, and.
Just want to make sure you all have a good night's sleep every night.
Yeah.
We look forward to seeing you next week.
Okay, I'd like to move on to item number five.
Item five is from the clerk of the Board of Supervisors, the appointment of applicants to serve on various committees, commissions, advisory boards, and county service areas. So, we have a few more applications. The first is for the Agriculture Advisory Committee, one vacancy for a term expiring 12/31/22 for a District One rep. We have an application from Libby Rader-Casick, she's an incumbent. On the Parks and Recreation Commission, we have one vacancy for a term expiring 12/31/20, District One. Matt Brock, the incumbent, has applied. McCollum Hills Cemetery District, one vacancy for a term expiring 12/31/23, and an application was received from Patricia Yocum, who is an incumbent. And then lastly, the West Point Cemetery District, two vacancies for terms expiring 12/31/23, and applications for, have been received from Kirk Smith and Brian L. Smith, who are both incumbents.
Okay. Any questions or comments or changes from the board? Any public comments on these appointments? I'll move it back to the board. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
I'll second.
Motion by Supervisor Stopper, second by Supervisor Toffinelli, all in favor?
Aye.
Passes on a five vote vote, thank you. I'd like to move to item number six. Thank you, Madam Clerk, for putting that list together. Are there any? Go ahead.
Oh, okay. So, item six is from the clerk of the board, to assign members of the Board of Supervisors to various committees for calendar year 2020. There's a list coming around that shows the current, or the past 2019 assignments, and then there's a blank form for you to fill in.
Blank form?
So, if you'd like, I can.
Does it have anything from Peter in encroachment?
I'll better go to Public Works and get an encroachment permit. I'm not sure, is this a new system? We put in what we want, and how?
No. What happens is I read off each one, and I tell you who served on it last year, which is on the 2019 list, and then you decide if that's going to remain the same, or if you would like to assign, the group would like to assign somebody different to the, to the position. So, in some cases, we have one or two representatives, and usually, they all have an alternate.
Okay.
The CSAC was already decided in December, so.
It was, but we revisit it at this meeting as well.
Understood.
So, is there any other questions?
Going to want to get pointed twice.
Okay, I guess I'd like to manage this. Are there any that, any of the supervisors would like to change, or modify, or drop on any of these committee assignments?
I, I have, I have a couple requests. I had briefly talked to Supervisor Toffinelli, and I offered to take the In-Home Support Services Committee, and he said he would take two of my alternate positions, the UMR and the CMCAA positions as alternate, and I will take the lead on IHSS, as long as Supervisor Toffinelli is still okay with that.
Was UMR and what?
Yeah, and what?
And, and CMCAA, not, not CMCA, I'm saying the wrong one. The Mariposa Groundwater Authority.
That's what we talked about.
Yeah, yeah, that's, sorry, I got the wrong acronym, and.
Mariposa Groundwater?
Eastside San Joaquin GSA. That's the one, Eastside San Joaquin GSA.
And I'm good with that, excuse me.
I'm good with that.
Could be easier just to line by line?
Yeah, you know, that's usually how we do it, so everybody can stay on the same page instead of jumping around. If you'd like to just have everybody weigh in, we can do that, but it, it is kind of confusing.
So, you just want to go?
That's fine.
Start Area 12 Agency and work on down?
Yeah, that's how we usually do it. Is that okay? If, if there's no changes, you can just say, no change, but, okay, so for the Area 12 Agency on Aging, right now Supervisor Callaway is the representative, and Supervisor Stopper is the alternate.
Fine.
Fine.
Good.
On the Calaveras Amador McCollum River Authority, right now Supervisor Garamendi and Supervisor Mills are the representatives, and Supervisor Toffinelli is the alternate.
I'm good.
Calaveras Public Power Agency, Supervisor Toffinelli is the representative, and Supervisor Callaway is the alternate.
Fine.
I'm good.
Calaveras Workforce Initiative, we have Supervisor Toffinelli is the representative, and Supervisor Stopper is the alternate.
Good.
Central Sierra Economic Development District, Supervisor Stopper is the representative, and Supervisor Callaway is the alternate.
I'm good.
Fine.
Central Sierra Child Support Agency, Supervisors Callaway and Toffinelli are the representatives, and Supervisor Garamendi is the alternate.
Fine.
I'm fine.
Children and Families First Committee, Supervisor Garamendi is the representative, and Supervisor Stopper is the alternate.
Good.
Calaveras Mariposa Community Action Agency, Supervisors Mills and Stopper are the representatives, and Supervisor Toffinelli is the alternate.
Good.
Good.
CSAC, Supervisor Callaway is the representative, and Supervisor Stopper is the alternate.
Good?
Yep.
No, I don't, maybe, I guess.
Calaveras Council of Governments, Supervisors Mills and Toffinelli are the representatives, and Supervisor Stopper is the alternate.
I'm interested in possibly moving to a representative position as opposed to alternate.
Knowing how critical Wagon Trail is through 2020, and maintaining the funding, District Four would like to stay on as a primary for that.
I would like to stay on it also, it's primary, I'm chair right now of that.
We do a lot of work with our federal partners to ensure that the funding is maintained on Wagon Trail, so when we get to breaking ground in 2021, we won't have a problem. So, there's a lot of background work that happens there. It looks like we've got it, Supervisor, Madam Chair.
Do you want to put it to a vote?
Yeah, I, I would like to put it to a vote.
All right. There's a motion from Supervisor Stopper to take either Mills or Toffinelli's position on the Council of Governments.
Take my position?
Mills or Toffinelli.
How would we do this vote, because it's odd under here.
Well, I mean, that's what you want, that's what you would like. Is there support on the board, I gather from Mills and Toffinelli, there's not? Mr. Garamendi?
I'm supporting a change.
Okay, I'm, I support leaving it as it is.
Dead Advisory Committee, the representative is Supervisor Mills, and the alternate is Supervisor Callaway.
Aye, but there's been no meetings.
Yeah.
I, I would, I would be interested in this, Madam Chair, insofar as working on the building, the ad hoc, is sort of, give me some insights, and I would like to take that on, assuming there's going to be a meeting on it at some point.
Would you trade something?
What do you want? What do you got?
I mean, do you, do you care, Dennis?
Well, there's been, you know, I've had discussions with our auditor about it, but there's been no formal meetings.
So.
I don't know if I got anything you want, Dennis.
Or you're willing to give up?
There's nothing, there's nothing really there, that's fine.
So, do you care?
No.
Okay. Mr. Garamendi, you will be in the position on dead advisory.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
And then Supervisor Callaway, will you be remaining as the alternate?
Yes, that's fine.
Okay. Eastside San Joaquin GSA, Supervisor Mills is the representative, and Supervisor Stopper is the alternate.
That is one of the.
No, Mr. Toffinelli?
That's one of the ones I'd like to possibly pass on to Mr. Toffinelli, as the alternate.
Pass on, or hand over, trade?
So Supervisor Mills would remain as.
That's fine, I'm, I'm fine with it.
Okay.
Thank you.
So, if I'm understanding you correctly, for Eastside San Joaquin GSA, Supervisor Mills will remain as the representative, and Supervisor Toffinelli will be the alternate.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Fish and Game Commission, Supervisor Stopper is the representative, and Supervisor Callaway is the representative, or the alternate?
I'd like to maintain that.
Yep, fine.
Okay. Hardwood Advisory Committee, Supervisor Stopper and Mills are the representatives, and Supervisor Callaway is the alternate.
It's fine.
I'm good.
Fine.
IHSS Advisory Committee, Supervisor Toffinelli is the representative, and Supervisor Callaway is the alternate. This is one that Supervisor Stopper was willing to take on the representative role.
Yes, ma'am.
And so, would Supervisor Callaway?
Yes.
Remain as, okay. Law Library Trustees, Supervisor Stopper is the representative, and Supervisor Callaway is the alternate.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yep.
LAFCO, Supervisors Toffinelli and Callaway are the representative, and Supervisor Mills is the alternate.
Yes.
I'm fine with it.
Yes.
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 With Supervisor Stopper, yes?
Yes.
I'm sorry, okay. Mental Health Board, Supervisor Garamendi is the rep, and Supervisor Stopper is the alternate.
Yes.
Yes.
McCollum River Association, Supervisor Garamendi is the rep, Supervisor Toffinelli is the alternate.
I'd like to stay.
Yep.
That's fine.
Motherlode Job Training Agency, Supervisor Stopper is the representative, and Toffinelli is the alternate.
Yes, I'm fine with it.
Mountain County's Air Basin, Supervisor Callaway is the representative, and Supervisor Mills is the alternate.
Yes.
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 Mountain County's Water Resources Agency, Supervisor Mills is the rep and Supervisor Stopper is the alternate?
Yes.
Yes.
Mountain Valley EMS, Supervisor Toffenelli is the representative and Supervisor Mills is the alternate?
I'm fine.
Yes.
National Association of Counties, we did not appoint anybody last year and do you want to keep that with nobody?
Unless we fund it?
We don't fund it. It's not a, it's funded by Health and Human Services. That's where our membership is paid for.
It is funded in, in a way that, that we'd always give that representative more in travel expenses to go to them.
That's correct.
So we do fund it that way.
Do you not want to make an appointment?
Jack, what do you think?
I don't know, I mean, we get a lot of the stuff through our other associations.
I think so.
RCRC and CSAC.
Right.
We don't need to go to a conference of 2,000 people. I'd like to leave it alone.
I'm fine with leaving it vacant.
Okay, okay.
You know, unless somebody really, 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 really wants to, I think we might have covered it.
Do you want me to remove it from the list?
Hmm.
Or do you want to have that decision every year?
I think it's good to have the decision.
Yeah, okay, no problem. Okay, so moving on to RCRC, there is RCRC, there is the Local Government Finance Authority, Environmental Services, and Rural Home Mortgage Finance Authority. Those are usually all the same representative and alternate. Representative is Supervisor Guaramendi, the alternate is Supervisor Toffenelli.
I would like to stay.
Yeah.
Gary?
Dan, are you interested in being alternate?
RCRC? I'll take that.
I'm fine with it, I'm fine with that.
Yeah. You'd like?
No, I think I will, I might attend a couple of those.
Okay. Sierra Nevada Conservancy, Supervisor Mills is the rep and Supervisor Callaway is the alternate?
Yes.
Yes.
Solid Waste Task Force, Supervisor Stopper is the rep and Supervisor Mills is the alternate?
Yes.
Yes.
Treasurers Oversight Committee, Supervisor Mills is the rep and Supervisor Callaway is the alternate?
Yes.
Yes.
The UC Cooperative Extension Advisory Council, that rests, the representative rests with the chair and then the alternate is the vice chair. And lastly, the Upper McCollum River Watershed Authority, currently Supervisor Guaramendi is the rep and Supervisor Stopper is the alternate. This is one that Supervisor Toffenelli was willing to be the alternate.
Good with that?
Yeah, fine.
I'd like to stay on.
That is all I have. So I'd need a motion in a second, please.
So moved.
Oh, second?
Motion by Supervisor Mills, second by Supervisor Stopper, all in favor?
Aye.
Pose, passes 5-0. Supervisor announcements?
In compliance with AB 1234, Chapter D of Government Code Section 53232.3D, board members shall provide brief reports on meetings they attended at the expense of the local agency at the next regular meeting of the legislative body. This report is required to include meetings attended for which there has been expense reimbursement, but may also, at the board member's discretion, include any other meeting attended by the supervisor on behalf of the county.
Okay, Mr. Mills?
I have nothing to report.
Oh.
Could you speak up, please?
Susan, you got that on tape, right? This is shocker.
Mr. Toffenelli?
I have a meeting, the executive meeting for COG on Thursday and I have a LAFCO meeting on Monday evening. That's all I have.
Mr. Stopper?
Nothing that costs the county any money.
But is there anything else you'd like to chat about?
There's quite a bit I'd like to chat about, Merida, but we'll, we'll leave that for a later hour.
Mr. Guaramendi?
I can just chat about what everyone thinks. First off, I have nothing to report, Madam Chair.
I have LAFCO also with Supervisor Toffenelli, but I, as you know, the census is upon us and so there's two parts to this. One, we have a representative trying to recruit people to be census takers. And two, I feel like we need to set up a system on how we're going to manage the census when it comes back to the board. And I might have said this before, but I just think it's something we should start giving consideration to and what the options would be on how we would manage it because it will impact redistricting. So that's it. So I mean, there's all kinds of permutations, I just think we should get ahead of it. All right, if there's nothing else, Mr. Al, excuse me, council, Madam Clerk, I think, this meeting stands adjourned.